This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
So seeing the presence of a quorum, I'm calling to order this meeting of the Regional School Committee at 6:35 PM, and I'm going to immediately move that we enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation with the APEA. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and I do declare, with intention of returning to open session. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by McDonald, second by Spitzer, and we'll take a roll call vote. Please state your vote when I call your name. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seager?
Seager, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. Thank you. And we will now move to executive session. I will call the meeting of the Amherst School Committee to order, and we'll take a roll call attendance. Mr. Demling?
Demling, present.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, present.
Oh, did we lose Ms. Lord? Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, present.
And McDonald, present. And that is quorum, so we are in order.
Okay, and I'm just realizing, actually, we don't have a quorum yet. Mr. Manino has not joined yet, right? He didn't jump on earlier? Okay, so Pelham does not yet have a quorum. I know Ms. Kenny is not coming right now. It's just me and Ms. Barlow. And I have not heard from others that they were not coming.
Second class?
Yeah, so my recommendation is, you know, since the first order of business is public comments, that, you know, with Ms. Hall's permission, you may be able to start that process. And when a third member... Oh, never mind. I will be quiet.
All right. All right, terrific. Seeing the presence of a quorum. I'll call this Pelham School Committee meeting to order at 7:15, and we'll start with roll call attendance. Ms. Barlow?
Okay, and I'm just realizing, actually, we don't have a quorum yet. Mr. Manino has not joined yet, right? He didn't jump on earlier? Pelham does not yet have a quorum. I know Ms. Kenny is not...
Manino's here.
You have four.
Yeah, I'm hearing an echo. Is that... Oh, okay. Maybe not anymore. Okay. All right. Sorry, I didn't hear your response, Brenda. Did you...
Barlow, present.
Okay, great. Mr. Manino?
Here, Manino here.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, present.
And Hall, present. All right. Sorry about that. Thank you.
That's fine. Okay, so our first order of business is public comment, and we have a lot. I'm going to start with the voice message comments while I get the written comment queued up.
Hi there. My name is Bennett Hazelup, and I'm the parent of an Amherst Middle School area and Fort River Elementary student. I'm only calling today to say that as we return from the distractions of the holidays, not to mention major political events that have rightly absorbed so much of our attention, we need to remain laser focused on finding a way to build on the positive momentum from the recent APEA school committee meeting. Having viewed that meeting, I feel sure that there's a way forward. And for the sake of our kids, our families, our teachers, and our community, we need to find it fast. Thanks to both the teachers and the school committee for remaining focused on this important job. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nick Spire. I am an Amherst resident, and I have one child at Fort River and one that we had to withdraw from the district. You have heard from our family previously, and I intend to keep my remarks brief. Enclosures of schools continue to be irrational and uninformed and deeply unfair to our students and families. The school district made a grave and easily foreseeable error in entering the current memorandum of agreement with the APEA and continues to propagate that error by not doing everything in its power to return students to school. The APEA has behaved petulantly in its refusal to revisit the MOA. There is blame to go around. As a parent with children in both private and public schools, the stark difference between what young learners receive in an in-person versus a remote environment is deeply saddening. The private schools don't have any more space or more money per student, and they are not being reckless with safety. They are trying their hardest to do what's right by kids, which is a whole lot more than can be said for Amherst Regional Public Schools. This injustice has been going on for far too long, and just because some families have gotten used to it does not make it acceptable. Need to reopen schools without delay. Thank you.
Good evening. This is Stephanie Huckman, a resident of Pelham and a parent of an eighth and ninth grader. I'm leaving this voicemail for public comment at the January 12th School Committee meeting. I appreciate that the APEA and the school committee were able to gather for a transparent trust-building meeting. I hope that discussion will continue to create a plan for safe reopening of our schools for this spring 2021. Many of our students are suffering due to remote learning. Although most teachers are doing their best to engage students and provide instruction, our students continue to fall behind. Their time on instruction is less than any other years. Their learning from other students or normal classroom discourse is absent. The students are suffering from social isolation, lack of engagement, and a continual decline in the desire to learn. Parents, guardians, and teachers try daily to encourage engagement in students, but nothing can replace the learning, social and emotional development, and overall happiness gained by in-person instruction. As schools all around us are able to safely open and medical professionals continually show that schools are not super spreaders, it is important to act now. Time is of the essence. The detriment to the emotional well-being of our students is more important than the low risk of contracting COVID when safety measures are in place. Like so many parents, I implore the APEA and school committee to actively engage in the dialogue and create an immediate plan for the safe reopening of our building. It's time to take advantage of all the hard work completed by our facilities members and all the PPE purchased and put our students back in the classroom. And it's time to put aside differences expressed in the past and put scientifically-based metrics in place for a return to in-class learning this spring. It's time to consult with experts such as the town health director and those with knowledge, training, and expertise to make the appropriate call for in-person learning. Parents want to support teachers in the schools, but without a plan of action to get students in the classroom this spring, many parents...
Sorry?
...will look for other avenues. If the APEA and school committee cannot show collaboration and a goal of in-person instruction for students and create a plan in the very near future, parents will continue to lose faith and trust in the ARB system and seek other options, furthering the decline in enrollment and increased budgetary constraints. I sincerely hope that the APEA and school committee will continue their open dialogue and allow all parties to the education system: educators, staff, administration, school committee, parents, and students to voice their needs. These conversations and decisions should be completed imminently. The students are our future. It takes everyone's actions and desires for civil discourse and our focus on putting students first that will allow the trust in the system to continue and parents to send their schools to the Amherst Regional School District. Thank you.
This is Eleanor Davis calling from Amherst. I'm calling to encourage the Amherst School Committee and the school administration to persist in finding some creative solutions for returning our students to in-person learning. As a parent who's students being educated in the district and as a professional who consults with many other districts in Western Massachusetts who have figured out this process, I have been discouraged by the lack of flexibility demonstrated by some of the players involved. I remain an advocate of public education, and I'm hopeful that a reasonable renegotiation of the current MOA can be achieved. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Ellen Boucher. I'm an Amherst resident and a mother of a Wildwood kindergarten and second grader. And I just wanted to take a moment to first thank the APEA and school committee for the meeting last week. I thought it was really productive and heartening to see both sides come together and build trust. And I just want to encourage everyone, all sides, to continue to work for, you know, original creative solutions to figure out a way of safely reopening our schools. I think it's really imperative that we find ways to get students back into the classroom and make sure that we're doing it safely. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Matt Lackner. I live in Amherst, Nassau. My daughter goes to Fort River. She's a current first grader. I'm just calling to, once you get encouraged, the school committee to do whatever they can to get kids back in school as quickly as possible. The kids need to be in school. The science shows that kids can be brought back to school safely. Almost every other county in the Commonwealth is doing it, as well as around the country. And our child is lagging behind. So whatever the school committee can do to get kids back in school, I think they need to do it, and I encourage them to do the best to do that. Thank you very much. Bye.
Are folks seeing my screen? Okay, so this public comment document is quite long. It's about, I think, 30 pages. And it will be posted on the Agenda's webpage in the morning. I apologize, it did not get posted today. But for folks that are having, you know, want to follow along at home, this will be available in the morning online.
As I mentioned, that document will be posted online on the ARPS.org website on the Regional School Committee Agendas page. Our next item is approving of the minutes. And I'm going to point out that what's in our agenda is actually incorrect. We did not and have not seen yet minutes for December 1st, 15th, and January 5th. That was just last week. But we do have, I'm gonna pull up, we have September 22nd, September 29th, October 6th, October 20th, and then the three November dates. The November date that says November 11th in the agenda, it actually was November 10th. We did not meet on the 11th. We met on the 10th. So that was an error. So for folks watching at home, the school committees received these, all of these agendas that I just listed a week and a half ago. We discussed them at our last week meeting, and changes and any revisions were emailed to Ms. Sharkus, who kindly helps us with minute-taking. And what's in our packet now reflects any comments and revisions that were sent to her within the last week. So tonight, rather than going through each individual one, unless there's a glaring error that somebody noticed that didn't get into the updates, I would accept a motion to approve the batch in one swoop, for region, sorry.
I move that we accept the minutes listed.
For the region, yep.
For the region.
I will, I'll second that. So moved for the region by Stanser and seconded by McDonald. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Seeger.
Yeah, I'm just noticing my name isn't on a few of the meeting minutes from, it looks like November 4th and November 10th as being in attendance. I believe those were included, the regions, so I'm just double-checking.
So Ms. Shark just commented that she, she did not send the updated versions yet. So these are, is that correct, that these are the unedited? I believe Ms. Kenny had a bunch of edits. Did she? She's not here tonight. I might suggest that we table this and come back to this at our next meeting then. So as a reminder, for anybody who is noticing edits in this packet, please do email Ms. Sharkus. Today is Tuesday. If you could email by Thursday, then we can be looking at that. Would that be enough time, Ms. Sharkus, for getting them into the packets for next week?
Yeah, that's enough time for me. If you could actually send them by tomorrow, just because I'm not going to be here this weekend, that would be great.
So by tomorrow, great. Okay, super. So we will now move on to our next item, which is a superintendent's, oops, am I on the right, I'm on the wrong page, sorry. Yes, it is the superintendent's update.
No, that's okay. I was gonna say, if there's something else that you want to do, that was fine too. But, so I actually have quite a few. So I apologize, even though we met just last week. So as you know, the budgets have been frozen, except for essential purchases in all three districts. And you'll get, second quarter just ended for us 12 days ago, or 13 days ago, but we continue to be concerned about the budget. And so on Friday of last week, we did inform our AFSMI cohort, which is custodians, van drivers, maintenance staff, that we would have to look to furlough while schools predominantly remain closed. So we do have some UFCW food service workers who have been furloughed since beginning of the year, as you're aware. And so we'll just keep you up to date, but I did want to let you and the community know that, you know, it's not something, it's probably the least fun thing, you know, or at least the thing that we like doing the least in terms of the HR department, myself. But when we've looked at the fiscal realities this year, particularly in some of our districts, it is the case that we are gonna have to adjust that, adjust our budget, and also adjust that it looks like we will be in remote for some time. We have been, and you know, if that changes, we will adjust those furloughs. But at the time being, we are starting to work with, you know, as, as we typically would with the bargaining members and the leadership of the bargaining. But since that email went out on Friday, and there's more follow-up today, just wanted to communicate that. As always, we start with voluntary furloughs, and some of our staff, particularly with the unemployment benefits, as part of the Second Cares Act, for a whole variety of reasons, who may be interested in voluntary furloughs. But that's the way we've approached it with other bargaining units, and we're at the place where we have to talk about that with AFSMI as well, or in the process of. On a more positive note, we got last week a Project Bread grant of $2,000 that's gonna supplement the food service program that we're running, that is services, you know, serving hundreds of meals every day. And so thanks to Project Bread, thanks to Michael Gallagher-O'Connell, who is the facilitator, the food service, school nutrition coordinator or director, excuse me, for doing that application, and Shannon on the business office who processes that all. Third thing is just thanks to Doreen Cunningham, as well as the team who put the anti-racism curriculum together. So that's, we're getting that going in Crocker Farm, and then we'll expand that to other schools. It's intentionally an iterative process, so that as teachers are interacting with the curriculum and working on it, that it can be improved and over time. And so really thank the team that Ms. Cunningham brought together in the summer, as well as her leadership on it. And I know it's one of the things that was high interest in the community of getting that going, as we said, at the elementary level. Crocker Farm had done some work last year with an external consultant, so they felt very, you know, primed to get going on it, but it'll go through all the schools throughout this year. And again, in a way that we're gonna get a field-tested by our staff and improve by the end of the year, so we're ready to go full school, you know, with everybody on the same piece, on the same page next year. But tremendous amount of work went into that. I just want to thank folks who worked on that. As you might have seen, there's a, the state came out with some support to get started with pool testing of students and staff members. We're already approved and have access to binex antigen testing. I was a webinar today for about an hour and a half, along with Robin Suppanat, our nurse leader, as well as Fay Brady. You know, I think I got some mixed feedback from Desi, whether our current distance learning model was the right model for pool testing, just because it's so small, and there's not a lot of close contacts, because everything's individualized. But we're gonna, you know, keep on following up with Desi, see if they will approve us, to at least, you know, perhaps start a pilot of it. But, you know, I think it was, the sense I got from the call is much more directed for districts that have more typical learning models in place in their schools, with more than one-to-one, you know, an adult and a kid in a room each, or some version of that. So remains to be seen whether Desi will approve us to be part of that program, but just wanted to pass that along as well. River Valley, so we got a couple grants that required as part of the grants to hire consultants around mental health supports, and River Valley's working with us. They've been part of it thus before, and we're working on trying to get in-person counseling available for students through River Valley. So thanks to them, we're also looking, they're working with us and trying to find bilingual staff members who can provide that service for families and students who are interested. So I'll more soon on that, but that's been a really nice partnership to get going. Just Amber School Committee meeting up, because it's a joint committee, just to review for people who didn't watch the meeting last week, that the district asked for three different enrollments. One, that was the 600 student enrollment that had been talked about a lot in the last couple of years. One, Fort River enrollment, Fort River only enrollment, and then one that was in between, that would have had not exactly the same, but roughly equal-sized schools, and involved in addition to Crocker Farm. MSBA only approved two possible pathways to study. One was to look at Fort River only. They sized it at 320 students based on capacity in the rest of the district. And then one was a 575 K-5 school option that would take Fort River and Wildwood offline, and have sixth grade go to the middle school. That has now been submitted and approved. We also submitted additional forms that they require that, just confirming that the town council has approved the funds for the feasibility study. Everything's in, and this afternoon I get confirmation that we are on target for moving forward to the next MSBA board meeting, which is February 11th. At that point, we'll move into hiring an OPM, but we being the building committee, we'll look to hire an ORS project manager. They have that slotted to perhaps come to completion in June or July, because that has to be approved also by MSBA. And based on their schedule, they said, you know, sort of if you're ambitious, you get to June, otherwise you get to July. But that would be the next step in the program, is a multi-month process to hire an ORS project manager. So we'll keep you up to date, but the good news is we are moving forward. I think I mentioned this last time, MSBA said, you know, it's slower and more expensive than everybody thinks it should be, and that's true of everyone's experience in the MSBA process. So I'm gonna say that every single time I give an update, because I think it's the best advice they've given me, and they encourage me to say it as often as possible. That's a lot of, I have more, but I went on that pause, I see a hand up, if that's okay with the chairs. Since one is eating, I'll just assume that role and call on Mr. Demling, if that's okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. So yeah, I bring this up because it's a joint Amherst and Pelham meeting, so related to the MSBA update you gave. So two options that were approved. One is a K-5 option, and one's a K-6 option. And so clearly, depending on what the Regional School Committee and the Amber School Committee decide with regards to sending sixth grade to the middle school or not, that then defines what option is viable going forward. So I think, I believe we discussed at the end of that Amherst meeting, the therefore heightened urgency or priority for finishing the discussion that we started a year ago of exploring sixth to the middle school. And I understand we have a lot on our plate right now. We have a very aggressive late start, that you're probably gonna update us on the whole of it, and, you know, in person at all. But if you could just maybe talk about what you think broad strokes is a reasonable timeline for finishing that work. I'm hoping that we can finish it like this, this school year, so that we can give the town of Amherst, you know, the parameters it needs to know what's viable going forward. But I'm interested to hear your thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, I think the report is mostly done. What's not done is the engagement. You know, so what you saw in what I presented, what people on those committee, or Amber School Committee saw at the regional committee, when I, you know, submitted my artifacts over the summer, was a mostly completed report without a huge component, which is the engagement. My recommendation, and I've talked to the chair of the building committee about this, is, you know, I wonder if the school committee and the building committee can actually work jointly on that engagement. And I agree with you that this spring was not too soon to get started. I think it would really bring together people who are gonna be charged with two different decisions, but they're interrelated decisions. And I think if we can get the broad swath of the town, you know, there may be different constituents that want to be involved in that. I think it's good, because they, you know, you can cut it a million ways. For me, they still need to come together with a decision that relate. And I'm not trying to relinquish, you know, or take away the school committee's authority on this, but I think it'd be really good for the building committee, at least, to be aware of the dialogue the school committee's having, instead of to be completely ships passing at night. So my recommendation is that I love to task people with things, I suppose, in these meetings. I'm starting to get better at that. Is that I wonder if Mr. Harrington, Ms. McDonald, myself, and the chair of the building committee at some point can sit down and talk and try to figure out what that might look like. But, you know, in terms of the data and the report, it's pretty much done. It's really the part that wasn't done was the engagement and an executive summary. But, you know, that's relative to the fuller report that the committee, I thought, did an outstanding job on that. I want to be really clear too, that like I am not at all, you all can say, you know, the things that you want to say. For me, I'm not saying sixth graders should or shouldn't move, but I think it's really about the process and the engagement at this point. I think Mr. Manino may have a question about that, so I see his hand up.
Yeah, and then I have a question too. Mr. Manino?
When will the town of Pelham get a chance to express its position on the movement of sixth grade to the middle school?
Yep. So here's how I would sequence this. I think unless Amherst chooses to send its sixth graders to the middle school, there's no conversation for the small towns, because it wouldn't, it just doesn't make sense, either space-wise or logistically, to send 16 students, 16 sixth graders to the middle school is just a non-starter. There wouldn't be a program for them. So certainly the towns can choose how much they want to engage in this in the front end, but until Amherst makes a decision, there is no decision for Pelham-Leverd or Shrewsbury to make, because logistically it doesn't make sense. So, you know, the soonest, Ron, that I could say that this building project, because you're a member of Pelham, you're not in the region, as soon as this building project, in the best case scenario, everything works perfectly, there's kumbaya in the world, and we get there, would be the fall of 2025. So, yeah, there's, you know, I think there's a, on the Amherst side, in my opinion, there's some urgency that I'm feeling and hearing, because it's, there's a fork in the road coming, and one of the forks involves sixth graders going to the middle school, and one doesn't. But from everybody else's end, there's a long time between that decision gets made in a building process, and when, you know, potentially a new building would be built that would force that decision to be realized. Does that help, Ron?
Yep, helps.
So I'm just going to jump in, and I'm speaking with my hat of the Regional School Committee Chair, not the Amber School Committee, because I'm gonna duke it out with the Amber School Committee Chair. But seriously, I'm speaking as the region chair. The decision, as I recall, about sixth grade to the middle school starts first with the region. The region has to make the decision about, pedagogically, is this what we want our middle, middle grade education to look like? And that's a decision that lies first and foremost with the region, regardless of any sort of building project happening in Amherst or Pelham or anywhere, frankly. So it's not that I'm objecting to partnering and with the, with the building committee on it, but I don't see, I think we need to have a conversation about it, because it's awkward, right? Just from a, from a decision-making process, there's no decision for Amherst to make until and unless the region decides that we'll take sixth grade.
No, you're, I totally agree, and we should put that on an agenda to come up sometime soon on the region. I think that's, that's really helpful. Thank you, Allison.
Yeah. Any other thoughts on this?
Okay, so I'll move on to the update. I want to thank our nursing staff, many of our nursing staff for giving the opportunity to volunteer this week in the regional vaccination site for first responders at the bank center here in Amherst. And many of our nurses participated, and they're doing incredibly important work of a couple hundred people getting vaccinated. Those who are actually, they themselves can get vaccinated mostly towards the end of the week. But just want to thank our nurses for volunteering. It was all day yesterday. It's four to eight, so it just ended tonight. And it's not just for the town of Amherst, it's actually for, you know, we're, us in North Hampton are the sort of the regional hubs for the area for first responders. Tremendous amount of work, and thanks to Emma Dragon and her folks at the town for their work. Good news on Distance Learning Center, the state inspection I got where this afternoon was passed. So they'll be looking as soon as possible to get, they being the Amherst Recreation, formerly LSC, to get their second set of students in, and they're working collaboratively with our team on that. So good news all around on that one. The next Fort Town meeting will be on February 6th, nine in the morning. We'll be talking about the regional budget. We'll have more information, we'll have the governor's budget by then, so people can mark their calendars for that. And that was sent out to all members of, you know, elected officials in the member towns. Someone queued me up earlier, late start. So we have another meeting with Union 28 later this week. We've met as administrative team multiple times, a smaller group, like a sort of task force. And we hope by Thursday to be sending out an email about engagements, multiple layers, both large group engagements for family, staff, and middle school, high school students, smaller group engagements further on in the process, a clear survey with a binary choice. So we are working towards getting a recommendation to you the last week in February for your consideration. We, I think we feel good about mapping that out. We could certainly talk about that if this, you know, one of the regional We could certainly talk about that if this, you know, one of the regional, actually, maybe it's a joint meeting, but next week. But we do want to engage all of our stakeholders in that, including, you know, focus groups like BPAC and CPAC and others. But we want everyone to be able to get engaged and we're trying to work on a very finite slide deck with the right amount of information because you can get lost in the research on this, even though it's very clear and the implications. So I think in general, we're trying to get a core issue is we're not going to, as I said last week, we're not going to have all the questions answered. We'll have some. But does the community want to make the change? Because I think if the community commits that they think it's best for kids, we can do the other piece as well over time. If the community feels like there's too many barriers, then so be it. But that's our goal is to engage the community. You know, there's been reading about, I'll just mention, not just North Hampton, but there's, you know, eight Metro West districts a couple of years ago that also changed their start times. We are not, you know, it's been done in Massachusetts. We are not trailblazers on this one. It's whether whatever we think is best for kids, knowing that nothing will be perfect and nothing will will not, there'll be unintended consequences of keeping our same schedule that we've had previously. And there's unintended consequences of changing it and and what do we think is in the best interest of kids. Second to last is we got some unfortunate news that the swimming pool in Belcher Town is now closed because Belcher Town's in the red and their health department has closed their swimming pool to high school students. So for two weeks, so we are scrambling, try to figure out what we can do and do. Involved in some advocacy this afternoon that we are not Belcher Town High School. Though it's not run by the school department, it's run by the town rec departments. That's making it a little more challenging of who to contact and how to advocate around that. But just wanted to share that and I'll hopefully have an update that's more positive next week. But that's where we are as it relates to swimming. The I had a conversation just before this meeting started with Desi about the waiver request and how to meet the for, you know, the minimum number of hours for Amherst and Pelham where we applied for the waiver. It was a very positive, productive conversation. Let me know that some of the way we've been coding things, you know, you could have been more generous to ourselves in terms of what counts as synchronous time. It does not only screen time, it could be work that's assigned as long as it's brought back to and discussed by a teacher. So we're meeting tomorrow morning trying to resolve that one. But it was a very helpful conversation because it's a little different analysis than what we had previously. And I want to end on the positive ones. So thanks to Todd Fruth, who works at our Summit Academy and our high school. He organized students for last weekend, the first ever virtual cabaret. They performed students perform solos and duets of popular songs and musical theater numbers. Pretty cool, January 9th. And it was just shorter, given the, you know, virtual nature of it. But, you know, just wanted to end with just thanking our staff for being so creative and still making sure that students are able to perform, albeit in different ways in this time. So thank you, Todd, and thanks for your department for always being creative and figuring out ways to get students in the front and center. So that is a very lengthy update. I apologize for the duration.
Any comments or questions from any committees? Since Peter went first before, I'll start with Ms. Spitzer this time.
All right, um, thank you, and I apologize for kind of. You had a lot and I have comments on multiple headings, so I don't know if it's easier to like give you the first, like do it one by one, give you a chance to respond or just try to get it all out there. So I guess one of my questions was, number one, thank you to everybody involved in the vaccine efforts, especially your nursing staff. I think that's wonderful news. I was just going over kind of the phase one. And I was reading that some of the, you know, independent therapists, physical therapists, occupational therapists, speech and language therapists performing work in the home are actually listed in phase one. So I'm wondering if there's anybody else within our school district who might actually qualify for this phase one. I know we're starting off with the with the first responders because within the phase four levels of phasing, it's it's complicated. But that was one question. And then the other question goes to a totally different topic, which is the late start time conversation. I'm just wondering if, I guess, as an elementary school parent, it's not actually going to be a later start for any of the elementary kids. It's going to be an earlier start time. And I think if we're talking about community engagement and communication around this, I think it would actually make sense to say change in start time because it's not going to be late for everybody. And if I'm listening to this conversation, I think it's good to be upfront that this is going to be different depending on where you sit in the community. So just kind of a suggestion as we're putting together those planning resources, I think that's really important. And then I guess the final question that might be, I didn't get to ask because we got started talking about. It might have been lumped into your first one, was just asking about the expansion of the distance learning centers. So I think that's great news that we have expanded, Amherst Recreation has been able to expand. I guess I'm curious about like what are the constraints on us going even further? What would the district need if we were going to serve more students in those distance learning centers? And those are the three. Thank you.
Fair. So the second one is a great suggestion. So it's not a question, so I just accept it as a helpful suggestion. And the first one, my understanding is that school staff outside nurses are in phase one. Even the nurses, I believe, are only in phase one if they volunteer for the to 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 help with the vaccinations. You know, I will say, I could go too long on this one, but the, I feel like it's 1776 and we're not a country. When I talk to people in other states, I have a colleague in a neighboring state who is a college professor who's getting vaccinated tomorrow because that state has decided educators pre-K through higher ed to be in phase one. Someone else I know who was vaccinated in New York State but works in New Jersey and the spouse should have been able to be vaccinated, but the state boundaries prevent them from being vaccinated, even though by the rules of the employer they would be. So all that to say, it's incredibly frustrating to see how the rollouts went. And I don't mean locally. I think everyone's doing a phenomenal job. I do think, you know, at a meeting where we got an update on this, I do think a month from now, you know, systems and infrastructure will be built up. I think we'll see a rapid escalation in the number of vaccines given, you know. And I want to be, as I always try to be in these times, humble about that. But but I think your frustration of not being like me, not really, all of us not having clarity is a huge problem. And the timeframe of February to March is still being repeated by the state for where educators fit in phase two of of the rollout. And I'm just hoping that perhaps when we get to a certain date next week and there's a different plan at the federal level, maybe we'll see an impact at the local level as well. And the last question was on distance learning centers. So right now, the only one we're running ourselves, as you know, is for intensive special needs students. And so if we chose to expand that, you know, instead of relying on our partners, but actually, you know, self-fund that, it would be a financial commitment that we would be making and that money, you know, would have to come from somewhere. But there's nothing that would prevent us from expanding or running our own distance learning center in addition to Mark's Meadow and Amherst Recreation or distance learning center of their particular focus, like the L L students or something like that. You know, it's a, it would be a financial commitment that we'd have to make. But there's nothing that I see as a barrier to that, other than the finances and finding the people to do, willing to do it.
Mr. Demling?
Yeah, so plus one of Ms. Spitzer's suggestion to call it change in start time. That's a really good catch for happy people. My my question's on planning for next year. So we, most of the public comment was about in person for right now, but we did hear some about people planning for next year and how that affects their near term decisions. So just real quick, could you just confirm? So the current MOA expires on June 30th. Could you just confirm that that's correct? And also, when when do you think will be, when do you anticipate that we will start in earnest talking about our in-person in-person posture for for the fall and what our approach to all that is going to be? I'm not blaming us for not taking up the discussion yet, given everything that we are currently discussing. But just to, you know, give people a heads up about what the timeline is. Thanks.
I don't think, I think it's about slotting it in the schedule, you know, in your schedule. I mean, not your personal schedule, but in the schedule of the school committee meetings. But I know it's on people's minds. I've heard that too. So, you know, I think it's, the hard thing now is, you know, it's, it feels far away. I know it's not in reality. I don't see a lot of districts talking that far away. And I think, but, you know, there's nothing preventing you you all from having the conversation sooner as opposed to later.
Mr. Manino?
I'm not sure I understood your answer. Basically, I want to know, when will we know whether there will be in-person learning in the fall? That's a planning process. When are we going, when, who decides? Is there another negotiation, another memo of understanding? When will we know?
I I think, I'm not trying to be coy here. I think that that's for you all to determine the timeline by which you make decisions about that.
So you're saying, well, I'm not on the regional committee, but I'm on the school, Pelham School Committee. How would a member of the Pelham School Committee start the ball rolling to discuss in-person learning for the fall? What procedures would a person follow?
So there's two options. One is that you could put it on a Pelham School Committee agenda by emailing the chair and myself so that you could talk about it in Pelham, so that the regional reps from the town of Pelham could take that and bring that with them to the regional, because the region is the negotiating agent. Or you could reach out to one of the two, not both, but one of the two Pelham members of the regional committee and share your opinions with that person.
Thank you.
Not to, not to jump the gun for any other questions from from any committee members. But in in my update, I'll be talking about the the next agenda planning for the next regional school committee. And I believe that we do have conversation on 21, 22 planning for on on the draft agenda for next week. So are there any other questions or comments for Dr. Morris? I'm seeing none. So we'll move on. And I believe, yes, the next item is a chair's update and I will be brief, but I I have a couple of things. So as as many people may have read in the in the Gazette this afternoon, the the article wasn't completely clear, I don't think. But the key point is we she, we received an email from the APEA Executive Board yesterday evening late indicating that they, they do not have a mandate from their membership to reopen negotiations on the MOA. So we are back to square one on that. We are not proceeding on that. They also indicated that their membership strongly supports in-person learning for intensive needs and preschool students at this time. And they shared with us a proposal, also known as a side letter with that describes requested conditions that are in addition to those conditions that are already agreed to within the MOA. In order to make that happen, the regional school committee is reviewing that. And so we'll we'll be progressing that. But we do appreciate that that offer and proposal from from the APEA Executive Board. We heard in the public comments, several commentators commented about our meeting last Thursday, the meeting of the regional school committee with the Executive Board of the APEA. And we do have two more meetings that are of these informal discussions scheduled and on our calendars. The next one is this Thursday at 5:30 PM. Same that time, same channel, the following week on Thursday, whatever that 21st. So two, two meetings on the calendars for those. And as I just mentioned, the regional school committee is meeting next week. And I guess it's TBD whether we want to make that a joint meeting. But right now, it's the regional school committee meeting. Folks can email me with agenda questions or ads, but right now it's drafted in that agenda and, you know, subject to change, is a budget update on Q2 for this year. School calendar, vaccine updates, 2021, 2022 discussion, including late start, virtual and in-person learning calendar and structures. Access testing and attendance and distance learning update. So that's all in store for next week. Any comments or questions from? Chair Hall, do you have an update that you want to give for Pelham School Committee?
I don't. Thank you.
Great. So moving on to school committee announcements, are there any announcements from any other school committee members? And Ms. Dancer?
There will be a budget subcommittee meeting tomorrow at 6:30.
Ms. Lord?
Yes, the school equity task force has sent out a survey. And we do apologize that we did not translate it ahead of time. If you have families that need it translated, is there an echo for you? Oh, maybe. Okay. Please contact me at lordh@arps.org and I'll do my best to get it translated to whatever language our families need. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Is there any update from our reps on the JLMSC? Not seeing any, so we can move on to our next item of the business, which is new and continuing business, talking about spring 2021 in-person planning. And to kick that off, I just want to say, this is an open discussion. The regional school committee has been talking about this. We wanted to bring jointly the Amherst and the Pelham School Committees together with with the regional school committee to continue this discussion. And it really is open discussion and ideation. We face multiple challenges. I'm sure that's not news, but just to recap, we continue to hear from families about their need and their demands for in-person learning. As I heard tonight, their frustration that we haven't found a way yet to make this happen is growing. Today's news about the APEA decision to not renegotiate the MOA is certain to add to that frustration and impatience. We're hearing directly from educators also that they are interested and willing to return to in-person instruction if enabled to do so. We also received a proposal from the APEA Board to enable that in-person instruction on a voluntary basis for our pre-K and intensive needs learning center students. We've begun, as I just mentioned, those informal discussions with the APEA. These are not MOA renegotiations. And I know there's there's some confusion, but those, these are not negotiation meetings, they're discussions. And all of us expressed at our last meeting our commitment all all around the room, the table, the Brady Bunch squares to working for students and to just in a strong desire to develop flexible solutions to better support their learning during this pandemic. So balancing all of those needs is really difficult and especially when we we know that negotiating the MOA is off the table again. So this discussion is really to talk about how do we get there and and get there quickly so that students are able to return to in-person learning this school year. So I open up the floor for comment, discussion, ideas, concerns. Ms. Spitzer?
I just want to say that I'm very heartened by the last, last week's conversation on Thursday. I want to thank Ms. Cunningham for for leading us in that conversation and for the APEA for joining. And while I think there's a lot of work to be done, I'm also heartened by the suggestion that we prioritize the pre-K and the ILFC students, the intensive learning students. So I I'm, I just want to acknowledge the the potential here for potentially some progress. But I also simultaneously want to acknowledge that I'm, I am, you know, I I think we want to keep moving because we need to make sure we keep momentum. And I think I'm I'm hard, you know, I'm glad we have these two meetings on the calendar. And I and I think it's really important that we keep up the momentum and we keep thinking creatively. In particular, and I just want to say like focusing in on these most vulnerable students, so the youngest among In particular, and I just want to say like focusing in on these most vulnerable students, so the youngest among us and those who have difficulty accessing remote learning. But I'm really curious about what others think because there are a lot of people on this call tonight who haven't necessarily been in some of the other conversations we've been having.
Mr. Demling.
Yeah, so I do have a, a motion I'd like to submit to our committees for consideration. I sent this out to everyone earlier today after we got the news about the, the MOA negotiation decision and also the, the, the letters about volunteer staff. So it's, it's somewhat long. Chair McDonald, I don't know if you'd be able to, to, to share that on your screen. You know, so I, I can, so while you're bringing that up, I can sort of talk about what it is and what prompted it. Okay, so there it is. So it was prompted by, by two things. So one is the, is the response today from our request from November 2nd, that the APA is, is not in a position to renegotiate the MOA at this time, which is obviously difficult news and, and makes it harder to move forward with in-person learning. And it was also prompted by the, the update that we got from our chair earlier, a couple of days ago, that a number of staff over the last days and weeks have, have reached out saying that they would be open to a voluntary return. And then we, we got the, the notification today that most of pre-K and ILC staff are open to a voluntary return. And so what this, what this is essentially is saying, let us go back to in-person learning, starting next month, starting in February, with staff who voluntarily choose in-person instruction. For as many students as possible within the safety guidelines we have, right? So keeping the, the distancing and the masks and obviously limited by the, you know, staffing availability. So prioritizing our higher need students, making sure the superintendent manages any shift back to remote learning based on a continuous assessment of health conditions and in consultation with local public health officials. And then to work in close collaboration with APA leadership and getting input from the school committee and student families to implement the plan. You know, I mean, I have a lot more I could say about why I feel like this is the best way forward now. But at, at the end of the day, it's, it's a pretty simple idea, which is we know that we have a clear and urgent need to provide in-person learning for a, a number of students and that we're not able to do that right now. And so if there are staff who are willing of their own volition to to teach in person, you know, let's, let's, let's make that happen and let's make it happen in the most expeditious manner we can. So it's more I could say, but I'll, I'll leave it there for, for, for anyone who has, has thoughts on that.
Mr. Manino.
I approve of the motion. I will vote for it if it's presented. But practically, what if a English teacher decides to volunteer in person? How does a student get back home in time to take a math course that's only offered online?
Mr. Demling.
Yeah, so I think the devil is in the details in a lot of this. And I think it's intentionally vague as an instruction from the school committees to the superintendent about implementation details. You know, clearly, you know, we're not going to get 100% voluntary participation. And within the current bounds of the MOA that we have, that's okay. You know, I think like staff are well within their rights of self-determination under the current MOA to, to be teaching remotely based on what the metrics are. You know, this would be, you know, how can we staff based on, based on those staff who are, are voluntarily open and willing to teach under the conditions that the superintendent sets? I'm, I'm sure that that will lead to, you know, a certain number of staff for a certain grade. And there will be, you know, those kind of imperfections that, that will have to smooth out, right? And so it's not going to be perfect. I just sort of, my way of thinking is that I balance the, the pros and cons against what we're currently doing, which is quite inequitable and quite imperfect. And so it's, it's, I, I think of it as trading one set of inequity and imperfection for a different situation. And what are we gaining? What we're gaining would be a whole lot of in-person for a whole lot of students in, in a way that completely respects staff autonomy. And when, you know, given the news that, that the roadblock now we have with, with changing the MOA, I, I feel like this is, this is a practical plan B that, that can move forward in, in the quickest way possible. That's the other thing that's really driving me here is the time urgency, right? You know, our school year doesn't go for the next 60 months. It goes for the next like five-ish months. So kids are really on the clock and particularly for kids who have gotten not much or nothing at all from remote learning. Every day that goes by, you know, is, is, is important. And so that, that's, that's the other thing that, that I think procedurally makes a lot of sense with this approach is that it doesn't get bogged down and let us negotiate all the particulars of conditions for every subgroup of student, right? It just says here, superintendent, find out who is willing to come back under the appropriate conditions that you set, consultation with public health officials and let's get this going.
Mr. Manino, Manino, did you have a follow-up?
I find Mr. Demling's comments compelling and it would also be a signal to the community where the school committee stands with respect to in-person learning. So I support the motion. Or the proposed motion.
Ms. Hall.
I, I also think, you know, given a really challenging situation, this is an imperfect but practical and I think really important proposed solution. It won't be ideal, but nothing is. You know, to, to think that it's possible that without this, we could be at a point where kids could go potentially into the fall without being in person is just horrible to me. I also like that this shifts the, kind of the oversight of this to the superintendent. I think the superintendent has proven that he really focuses on what the public health indicators are and that we can trust him to look really carefully at what the experts are saying is safe and not be left up to, you know, someone like me. I, I certainly am not, but I think that he knows the right experts to talk to, to make sure we can do this. So I also support this very strongly. And I think it's actually incredibly important to make sure that we can get as many children in schools, learning in person as possible. And I think that we can do that safely.
I think I would like to, we, we talked about sort of the conversations that we've started having with the APEA Executive Board and, and those that have gone, I think we all came away from, sorry, I should say, we, the regional school committee and the, because we have members on, on this call that were not part of that, that conversation. So I apologize, but I think we, we all walked away with a, a feeling of, of sort of shared direction and shared interest. And, and I really do appreciate the, the proposal and the quote unquote side letter that we've received from, from the APEA to provide in-person learning for our highest need and highest priority students that are really truly suffering. All students are suffering to a greater or lesser extent right now in extended remote learning, but really working to get sort of those priority students in. And, and I would look forward to sort of this, you know, it's a creative solution around our, around sort of what's become sort of an intractable situation with our, with our MOA. And I, and I see this as a, as a creative solution as well, that's sort of in the spirit of that, that voluntary return for the pre-K and the ILC students. So just extending that, that solution or potential solution to even more students. So I also would support this. Ms. Barlow.
I'd also like to share my support for Mr. Demling's proposed motion. I think it builds upon the side letter and it makes a lot of sense. And I think it'd be, I'm important for us to respond to all these public comments by trying to find a way to come together to get students in school safely.
Other thoughts from folks that haven't had a chance to speak yet? Ms. Dancer.
So I know that Mr. Demling made this very general, but my brain can't stay out of what might be potential details. I like the idea. But so let's say you're in the middle school and you have half of the team members who are willing to come back and teach and half of them aren't. I mean, this there's, there's a, it's maybe not the reason to not support the attempt to do this. I just think that we may be putting a huge load onto the superintendent at a time when he already has a lot on his plate. I haven't made up my mind yet whether I would vote for this or not.
Mr. Demling.
Yeah, I mean, that's an excellent point and it's, it's absolutely a huge ask of the superintendent. And, you know, if were we to pass this tonight, I would expect the, at our next meeting, the superintendent to come back and give us the biggest reality checks of what we're asking for. Right? I mean, I certainly would expect that there are going to be some buildings, some grades, some programs. Because we talk about pre-K and ILC, by the way, right? But we have a number of specialized programs that are in that high needs category, building blocks, Summit Academy, Ames, PIP. You know, let's, let's go, list goes on in addition to our, our other priority groups. So there's going to be cases, you know, where, where we don't have enough staff to, to meet the in-person requests from parents. And, and that implementation, you know, if were we to go ahead, will be imperfect. And in some cases, it, it, it could be inequitable. I don't think we should shy away from that. And so I, I balance that against what we have now, which is no in-person and, and, and a host of inequity. Right? I real, I, I really think about like the, the low income families and the students on IEPs and the students who are struggling emotionally. And I kind of balance that and, you know, we, we, if, if this is asking the superintendent to implement a, a perfectly equitable solution, then we should not pass. Right? We should do this with eyes wide open, but this is a very challenging situation. We are, you know, coming off a, a really disappointing result with, with knowing that we aren't going to be able to move forward, changing the MOA. And we have some time left. And so what is, what's the best shot for getting some level of in-person? Right? And I, one of the comments from the 30 something pages of the comments we got tonight that really stuck with me was that gentleman who said that even if his kindergartner got one, one day, they would be elated. Right? And so I, I think of like, what if, what if the high school, you know, eventually ends up that they get a half a day, you know, for one or two of their specials or something? I don't know. You know, this is the kind of thing that I would expect this superintendent to come back and reality check us on. I, I think I would be okay with that because we would be doing the best we could and we would be able to tell the community, right? We would be able to honestly and authentically tell staff and parents, look, we heard you. We weren't able to change the MOA, but we did the best we could, but that honors staff autonomy to the help to, to provide as much in-person as, as we could, knowing, knowing that it, it, it's not going to be perfectly inequitably, perfectly equitably distributed. So kind of babble there, but I hope I address that.
Ms. Hall.
Um, I, yeah, I also think that, I mean, things are certainly challenging now and asking Dr. Morris to implement this will be a challenge. And I don't mean to be flip about that. But we are in for really, really serious challenges, no matter what, whether we do this and the challenge is in the immediate term. Or if we don't and huge numbers of families leave the district and then we have really serious budget problems. Or if there's even more loss of learning to deal with, especially with the students that are most harmed by remote learning. So I just don't think there is a way to do anything in this situation that avoids challenges. And I have to wonder like if the issues that we create would actually be worse if we don't do this. So, I mean, I, again, I'm not, I'm not trying to like, I'm not the one who would be doing that specific work. And so I don't mean to undermine what that would mean. I just, there's no easy way, but I think not making a decision in, in the immediate term like this is just going to push most likely bigger problems down the road and those won't be able to be dealt with, with a single motion or, you know, a few weeks of a lot of work if families just bleed out of the district and then we can't fund programs.
Mr. Harrington.
Yeah, so kind of in, in reading this and kind of digesting it, like I'm, I'm reminded of the fact that we're, we're kind of here because some folks decided to vote for us because they wanted us to kind of represent them. And I'm, I'm also cognizant of the fact that we provided a certain degree of like leadership in the district. I, I feel like this right here is probably, it's, it's the, the best balance we're going to get right now, right? Like this, it's, there are definitely going to be inequities, but less so than there are right now. I feel like that we are underserving a certain population. This is prioritizing it. We've heard from the APA leadership that that's what they want to do too. That this is, this is as good as it gets right now, I think. I, I mean, I don't, I'm trying to look at it from every other angle, trying to look pessimist, optimist, but I, I feel like this is as good as it gets right now. So long as it's, it's not too much of an ask, I guess, for the superintendent. Like we would definitely support, right? In any, any kind of way we needed to, but yeah.
Hey, I'm glad you, you said that, Mr. Harrington, because that's sort of been what's weighing on my mind. And it's, it's really, really challenging. You know, we talked about this last week as, as all the different needs and desires and, and opinions that, that we have to weigh and that we hold on our shoulders. And yet we as school, as elected members of a public body answer to our community. And, you know, and the families that trust our district with their, with their children's education. And I, I can't read those 31 pages of public comment and not feel like we're not doing what their, our community is asking us to do and asking us to step up and have the courage to, to find a, a solution and lead. And, and I also read impatience and frustration, the sense that, that we've been sitting back and sort of not being creative and not trying to figure out ways forward. And it's unfortunate that, that it's now January. I share all of those frustrations and that criticism is, is, is well-grounded, I think. But I, I do agree that this is, it's tough. It's going to be a lot of work. I think we need to do this for our community. And Ms. Spitzer, your hands up.
So I just want to raise a couple of concerns. One is I'm worried that this is going to potentially have a really negative effect on the conversations we've been having with the APA. I'm, I'm, I don't have a crystal ball, but I'm worried that if we vote on this tonight, it might close down some of the conversations we've been having. And I did hear loud and clear that they want us to work together. So I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned about the potential stress this is going to put on relationships between teachers and students. So we've been, we've been the ones bearing the brunt of, you know, why, not solely. I know people have been reaching out to, to teachers directly too, but we've been bearing the brunt of the unhappy teacher, you know, the unhappy parent who has been, you know, wants their kid in school. And I'm worried. And I'm worried about the teacher who doesn't feel comfortable coming in. And then it becomes known because this is now a voluntary basis. And so say like, you know, Joey in the other class is in person now, but my kid's not in person. And I mean, putting pressure directly on, on my kid's teacher because I want to be in person. So I'm thinking like, we need, I want to make sure that we can protect that person because I, I think this is a potentially problematic and could really strain the relationship. I guess I'm just, I'm worried this is going to stop the conversation about the pre-K and ILC students before it really even got off the ground. So I'm wondering, I don't know if there's a way to modify it to explicitly have it, since, since they've indicated that they're interested in those specific populations, if it would make sense to start off with that population in February and then see how the planning goes on those two populations and then come back and potentially have a new motion that would expand it to the next priority groups. I think I'm in the minority here with kind of my feeling kind of cautious and anxious about making this move. But I just wanted to voice those concerns.
Mr. Demling?
So I think those are very valid concerns. So the, the end of the motion, the superintendent will work closely in collaboration with APA leadership. That's not just a throwaway line, right? And I don't honestly think that we could have put that in there prior to last week. And, and I don't know if I would have, I don't, I don't think it would be, it would have been pragmatically effective to put it in had the APA not come out last night approving voluntary return for pre-K and ILC. You know, they've, you know, I give the APA a lot of credit for being the first public organization for, for supporting that voluntary return. And, and, you know, like, like we've, like every person has said in some degree, there's a lot of implementation to be done here, a lot of details to be worked out. And the expectation, you know, the whole meaning of that last section there, that talks about engagement not only with APA leadership, but also school committee and families is because the expectation isn't the superintendent's going to go off into an isolated room and, you know, write up what he thinks is, is the plan and then reveal it to everyone. You know, it's, it's going to be, you know, those, those details should be informed by those conversations. And I would expect that, you know, at our next, in our subsequent meetings with the APA, that would be a big part of it. You know, my, my concern with, with starting just with pre-K and ILC is that there are so many other subgroups that, that really need attention. I know we talk about highest need students and certainly pre-K and ILC are included in that. You know, we also have ESP, PIP, Building Blocks, Ames, Connections, Summit Academy, as well as, you know, the S Life students and beginning ELL. These are all students that the district reached out to, to leadership on last October to try and get the ball rolling and conversations about volunteer staff. You know, that was three months ago and we have a conditional thought of support for pre-K and ILC. That's, that's definitely progress. But I think what it, what it says to me is that that's, that's, that's a long methodical process. And we should, we should continue that and we should absolutely be implementing and keep in the spirit of respecting staff autonomy. I don't, I don't think there's any getting around the fact that, you know, we can't control every person in the community's reaction. And we've certainly seen, even with our current model, right? Parents and teachers and members of the public on occasion acting inappropriately. And, you know, I think the thing that we can do to echo Mr. Harrington's comment as leaders, as, as people who are elected and are trying to represent how we go about this is that we, we continue with the respectful, open communication and we absolutely, you know, respect the autonomy of what has been agreed to so far. We obviously want to change the MOA, the school committee does, that's very clear, but we haven't been able to do that. So we have, we have what we have. And, and I think if the school committee expresses that we are, this is our pragmatic plan for right now and we are totally supportive of the right of teachers to continue to work remotely. And that is under the current MOA sacrosanct. And I think, I think if we, if we express that and lead with that, I think that that can help achieve these, these really needed benefits of in-person for, for our students.
Ms. Lord?
Thank you. I think I'm going to say a similar thing to Mr. Demling. But I really want to address that at times during the school year, our school committee, union rift as mimicked by the town has become quite polarized. And in some ways, we've mirrored the national politics of VTRIO. And I just want us to stop because I know we're better. I know who we are. I know that our teachers love our students and they want to be in person. I'm in support of this motion and I pray that parents and community let teachers have their autonomy. We don't know whose child is a cancer survivor or who has underlying conditions. So if there's a teacher that doesn't come back, I pray that we're all, or can I say pray? It's a, okay, I hope that we're all respectful of each other's story. We don't know each other's story. We don't have a right to know it. So if it's going to be voluntary, I trust that we will let it be voluntary, not put any pressure on a teacher that it's really not feeling, well, a teacher that cannot do it. Yeah, I just, yeah, I want to, I want us to listen to each other and hear each other and keep processing with our union thing, but I also am in support of this and honoring teachers that aren't volunteering. Thank you.
So there's a couple of folks that haven't spoken yet and I want to make sure that before we, before anybody else speaks again, that you have an opportunity to speak, so Mr. Sullivan or Ms. Seeger?
Yeah, I want, just want to say, um, in full support of this, you know, we, we do have the same goals, but our timelines are so different. And we really do need to start, we're not talking about putting kids back in school next week. We're talking about trying to get them in when it's safe and that we just, we need to start working on this because otherwise we could end up having middle schoolers or high schoolers go to school for a week in June and then they, you know, then we're looking at a new school year. So we gotta, we gotta start talking, at least with ourselves now and get this thing rolling.
Ms. Seeger?
I really appreciate the sentiments that Ms. Lord shared about finding understanding for, for a system where teachers may opt out and want to stay home. I'm generally in support of this plan and I do have the concern of it being a lot of work for Dr. Morris, but from everything you've seen so far in planning, I feel like he can work it out. He'll find balance in that between teachers who want to come back and teachers who may not. And how do you balance that between the student load and the teams, et cetera, et cetera? Although I do acknowledge that it sounds like a lot of work. But I'm, you know, I'm hopeful and especially with prioritizing the students that need to be in the schools the most, that, that there will be a, a progression. This isn't a plan that has to be all put together at once and, you know, it can be a process and ongoing process. I don't know, but anyway, at any rate, I support this.
Ms. Lord, your hand is, your little palm, but that's old, okay. Does anybody have any further comments? Are we ready to make that motion and the vote, anti-votes? No further discussions? And so I will share the motion again so folks can read it as, as I make the motion. Are you seeing the motion now? Google Meet doesn't show you, like, put a little border or shiny border around what you're presenting. So I have no idea which, which one it's showing, but good, okay. Would somebody like to make a motion for the region? Or did we want to start with Amherst or Pelham first? I don't. Mr. Demling?
I move that the Amherst School Committee directs the superintendent to develop and implement a plan for the return of in-person learning with staff who voluntarily choose in-person instruction for as many students as possible within the safety guidelines of public health officials, starting in February and prioritizing higher need students. The superintendent will manage this return and any shift back to remote learning based on a continuous assessment of health conditions and direct consultation with local public health officials. The superintendent will work closely in collaboration with APA leadership and gather input from the school committee and student families for safely, to safely implement this plan.
I'll second the motion moved by Demling and seconded by McDonald's. And we'll take a roll call vote of the Amherst School Committee. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
I think I'm going to have to abstain.
And McDonald, yes. So the motion passes for, for yay, zero, no, and one abstention. Would somebody like to make a motion for the region? I will make the motion if somebody else will second it. I move that the regional school committee direct the superintendent to develop and implement a plan for the return of in-person learning with staff who voluntarily choose in-person instruction for as many students as possible within the safety guidelines of public health officials, starting in February and prioritizing higher need students. The superintendent will manage this return and any shift back to remote learning based on a continuous assessment of health conditions in direct consultation with local public health officials. The superintendent will closely, will work closely in collaboration with APA leadership and gather input, input from the school committee and student families to safely implement this plan. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved by McDonald and seconded by Sullivan, we'll take a roll call vote of the region. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Abstain.
Ms. Dancer?
Abstain.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The motion passes seven six to zero with two abstentions. Chair Hall?
All right. I'll move for Pelham that the school committee directs the superintendent to develop and implement a plan for the return of in-person learning with staff who voluntarily choose in-person instruction for as many students as possible within the safety guidelines of public health officials, starting in February and prioritizing higher need students. The superintendent will manage this return and any shift back to remote learning based on a continuous assessment of health conditions and direct consultation with local public health officials. The superintendent will work closely in collaboration with APA leadership and gather input from the school committee and student families to safely implement this plan. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, moved by Hall, seconded by Menino, will do a roll call vote. Ms. Barlow?
Barlow, yes.
Mr. Menino?
Menino, aye.
Ms. Dancer?
Abstain.
And Hall, aye. So the motion passes three to zero with one abstention.
Okay. I can stop presenting. Thank you. We now move on to our next item, which is warrants. And we have three committees here, so I believe I have one for the Amherst School Committee. I need to find it. Ms. Spitzer, I don't know if you have any further?
You as well, I need to also bring them up, just a moment.
I can go, I found mine's up. I, Allison McDonald, authorized by my signature to payables for payroll in the amount of $635,567.54 dated January 13th, 2021, and I signed this on January 8th, 2021.
I can go now.
Yep, go ahead.
I, Carrie Spitzer, authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $5,124.64 for the warrant dated January 7th, 2021. This included general fund expenses of $5,000, $5,124.64 and I signed this on January 7th, 2021. I authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $66,983.24 for the warrant dated January 11th, 2021. This included general fund expenses of $37,231.1 revolving fund expenses of $9,750.60 and grant and expenses of $15,264.29 and other funds in the amount of $4,737.34 for capital. I signed this on January 11th, 2021. That is all.
Chair Hall, are there any for Pelham that you?
You know, I have a bunch of them and we have a Pelham only meeting on Thursday. So given the time, I'll just, I'll wait on mine.
Thank you. And next is gifts and I don't believe we have any gifts this evening. So I will move to adjourn the regional school committee. Is there a second?
Second.
And moved by McDonald, seconded by Stancer, there's no discussion. Roll call vote, Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Stancer?
Stancer, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The region is adjourned. Chair Hall?
All right, thanks. I'll make a motion to adjourn the Pelham School Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Second advice, Dancer, and I'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Dancer?
Stancer, aye.
Mr. Menino?
Menino, aye.
Ms. Barlow?
Barlow, aye.
And Hall, aye. Pelham is adjourned. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night. Scheduled for Amherst topics, but we did not receive any specific to Amherst. So we can move on to community forum planning and I'm going to confess, I need a moment to pull up the document that I shared with you all. And of course, I can't find it, but I will, I have the Google Doc, so I will do that. So this, what we're talking about, there was a, just as a reminder for folks watching at home or for those of us that at this late hour, we, we need a refresher. We had, there was a group of citizens, residents of Amherst that submitted a petition under the town charter. I forget the section that it is, but it's a resident meeting, a resident open meeting and requested us to do this, requested the school committee to have a meeting on the absence of in-person learning. What I shared as a draft is really, really to have the conversation going, but is the proposal of how we might structure this, this forum. And just as a note, I did review this with the, the primary petitioner. And just as a note, I did review this with the the primary petitioner. And so this incorporates all of their input and and ideas as well. So just, just, I find it always helpful to just capture what are what are the objectives of the forum? And so, and again, I reviewed this with the petitioner, and this sort of aligns with what their expectations are for what we, what the objectives of this forum will be. So it's really to provide an opportunity for community members to voice their concerns and questions about the 2021 school year, particularly with regard to the lack of in-person learning, and to foster a shared understanding of the factors that are related to implementing in-person learning in the district during COVID, including and there was in the, for those of you that have seen the petition, there's, there's a whole host of questions that were included in that, and they're sort of at the bottom of this page. And I tried to bucket them into sort of big topical areas, so impacts of the extended period of distance learning on students, health and safety plans for in-person learning, phasing and timetable for returning to in-person learning, decision metrics framework in the MOA for in-person learning, and budget impacts of extended distant learning and of a return to in-person learning. The proposed format would be a two-hour online forum. And I talked to Dr. Morris and I talked briefly earlier this week. Actually, that was just yesterday, wasn't it? This week seems so long. That we can do this on Google Meet. One of the things that the petitioners really like hold dearly is is that it's a live comment and live commentary presentation opportunity for resident participants as opposed to what we typically do with public comment right now, which is the pre-recorded comments or email. And there is a way to do so with Google Meet. We just need commenters to be able to sign up ahead of time so that they can have the correct link to be able to get into the Google Meet to be able to speak. And then Dr. Morris would be able to facilitate so that they're muted or unmuted as as needed, depending on when when their comment is up. We're proposing January 28th, which is a Thursday for that, and then this is sort of roughly the flow. There would be a brief norm setting, very brief presentation that sort of touches on what is known and what is sort of just the common set of facts on on sort of these big bucket areas where the where the petitioners had questions. And then the bulk of the time would really be in that community live. I called it presentations. It's really comments. There would also be an opportunity for response to questions at the end of that. And the petitioner's also requested that we that we have our public health director join. And so I haven't yet extended the invitation, but so that would be the, that's why that's in italics, is potentially we would invite Ms. Dragon, our public health director, to join to answer any questions that might be related specifically to community health and public health. So thoughts or ideas on on this format? A proposed format, and it is a draft, so even though it represents the input from the petitioner, I think I tried to highlight what the what the key areas of interest were from their from their perspective. Mr. Demling.
So overall, I like the structure. I appreciate you taking the time and effort to reach out to the primary petitioner. You know, we want this reflective of what the request was, so this, that's, that's excellent. I like that combination, that that three-point combination you have out there. You know, district presentation on topics above. So we very recently passed a motion that affects a lot of this. And so I'm imagining, given the timing, right, it's like, what, 16 days from now? There will be more information available and more questions that there will be about about that implementation of voluntary return, and so you know, I don't, I don't think we need to so decide what those slides are now, but I would, I would imagine that the superintendent can contour that presentation to what is, you know, needs to most effectively be communicated. If it, if it's allowed within the town charter for for this kind of thing, I don't know what the town charter says about it, really. It would be great to to ask or invite the APEA Board to leadership to participate on the on the panel if they if they wanted. You know, keep, keep on that spirit of collaboration, I think would be would be really good. And I love the fact that you have Emma Dragon there, you know, as the the person to talk about the safety, so. But overall, I think it's a good plan.
I should have noted, thank you. I should have noted also that I have a question out. The the town council will 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 also be invited to 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 be present, and in the question that we have right now is, to what extent they'll be actually in, you know, the the invited versus the viewers? So that's TBD. And we also will share this and publicize this with our colleagues in the region so that they also are aware if they want to sort of acknowledging that while while our residents, our residents of Amherst, and there's two different districts, the request went to the Amherst School Committee, that our our neighbors don't always make the same distinction between between bodies about whether it's a secondary and elementary school question, so that our colleagues from the region will be invited to to view it as well. Any other thoughts? I think I think that would be a question back to Dr. Morris, and then probably not that one that I would expect or ask you to answer this evening, but I do think, so the the point that Mr. Demling raised about the timing of it, given the motion, the the vote that we just had, does this, does this date work for having having some of those answers and or not? So I think we'll just want to sort of think through that as well. Dr. Morris?
Yeah, I don't think we'll have super clear, I mean, I don't think all will be resolved in 16 days. You know, just to be very candid about it, and so I don't know if that matters or doesn't matter, and maybe that's a really good question to bring back to the petitioner. Given the vote that that the three bodies took tonight, to get a sense of what works best, because I think, you know, this is a community, my understanding, you know, or I'm not, my understanding, I believe it's truth, I'm like, is that it's a community-driven petition, so I think just if if that person who led the charge on this would feel differently on the timeline, I think giving that person the opportunity to weigh in, that would be my recommendation, so it's not really up to myself or the committee, but really it's about what the purpose was.
Yeah, that's a great idea, and I I think also you know, this in the spirit of of ensuring and bringing all stakeholders to the table as we develop this plan, I think that also could be really useful to have it when before any, any, you know, plan is is being rolled out, sort of to really hear sort of the ideas from the community on this. Okay, are there any other discussion ideas from any members? No? Great, so I will follow up with the with the primary petitioner to sort of ask that question about whether that date is still amenable. So our next item is the Comenantes sibling policy. This was sort of revisiting the our current policy in light of some questions that have come from community members, families that are have have students in within Comenantes. And that, Dr. Morris?
Yeah, I can just give you a sense of of the where I believe it's coming from is families who have kids that were in the first cohort of Comenantes who are current first graders who don't live in the Fort River catchment area. You know, I understand, I'm not taking a position on it, but I understand their advocacy for younger siblings to be involved in the program. I will give you my two cents, but I think that's the framing is, we now have kids who are not at Fort River, who are at Fort River, excuse me, solely because of Comenantes, and then for their younger siblings join the program, and so you know, I have two sort of competing viewpoints, to be candid, so the first is, as long as the Spanish number, Spanish-speaking or multilingual population stays at the point we want it, in terms of the monolingual English-speaking population, I'm pretty open to that. It's really, you know, for me, it's not an educational challenge, it's, it'll be a logistical challenge, but it's really about a community challenge that you you all face. What I'm not willing to do is to dilute the percentage of Spanish speakers in the program, because I think that's both critical to the success of the program, as well as consistent with the aims of the program that we had at the beginning about why we started it. I think the thing that I, you know, for you all to consider is, if you open the door to siblings joining the same school as siblings who are part of a program, I think it's a broader conversation where you may want to think about special education, specialized programs and other things. I'm not going to weigh pro or against, you know, pro, you know, for or against. But I think if we're going to have a sibling policy based on program, I don't know how we cut the distinction between Comenantes and specialized special education programs. And then if we go down that road, there's some logistics and cost to it. And, you know, it's hard to quantify that, because we don't know exactly how many people, but you know, I think that's where it gets interesting, and I don't mean that to be flip, like, I mean, it's actually like a really interesting question that this committee struggled with in some times before. We had Comenantes about how to manage the fact that for some families, one sibling attending a school because of a specialized special education program meant that the other sibling was not able to attend that school. So there's a lot of, it's not a simple issue for me. I'm very empathetic to folks in the community who are advocating around the Comenantes. You know, as a parent of multiple kids, I think, you know, those of us who are can all identify that, you know, there might be some real interest in having kids be in the same elementary school. For many families, not everyone, right? I'm not talking about special needs or anything. Some families are like, no, keep my kids apart, but for many families, from a convenience viewpoint, from a pickup-drop-off viewpoint, if they're providing their own transportation, and just from a school climate and culture viewpoint, that's a real advantage, but I think, I can't, you know, for me, I can't separate out this program from some of our other district programs that have students attending outside their catchment area. So to summarize, I'm really, I will be comfortable in the end, as long as we're not diluting, reducing the Spanish-speaking or, you know, Spanish language population. But I think the broader context of students in programs writ large and siblings is one that does come with logistical challenges and then potentially financial challenges as well in terms of additional busing, because our van seats are at a premium. And so that doesn't apply as much to Comenantes, but it does to specialized programs, so it's messy. You know, I wish I could be here and just be like, oh, it's really clean, and this is smooth, but I think my job is is not to do that when it's authentically not clean and smooth. So sorry to make things complicated. I was really quiet much of the night.
I have a question about how this, so how this would be or could be implemented, if we were, if we were to do this, would that mean that potentially a non, non-primary or, you know, in the English-speaking cohort of but a Fort River, Fort River zone student in, that is English-speaking, that desires to be in the Comenantes program, that they could potentially lose that seat to a student, an English-speaking student from Wildwood or Crocker Farm?
That's true, so it does, yeah, no, I'm glad you raised that. I meant to, and I apologize, it's late, it was up early. You know, that that's the other political complication, you know, and practical complication is, you know, it means that you know, the first two years, we were pretty much able to support every Fort River monolingual English-speaking student who wanted to be part of the program to be part of the program. I think two or three years ago, so, Mr. Demling, you may have been are you the longest-serving member of the Amherst Committee now, Mr. Demling?
Yeah.
I think, so you may be, I I may have said enough years ago where you may be the only person who was here when I said it, but one of the pieces of feedback that Ms. Richardson and I got was a caution on sibling policies, mostly because districts utilize them or were pressured to utilize them to reduce the number of native or speakers of whatever the language the program was in, so I think that's not so much a challenge, and I don't think this will be a challenge in the sibling front for a little while, but as the program matures and there's more and more younger siblings, it could end up being, you know, if we have 20 English-speaking spots and 10 go to siblings at some point in the future, that certainly wouldn't happen next year, then you're talking about half the program being sort of closed for the Fort River population. So that's why I say it's not easy, like, I wish, from the parent point of view, I absolutely empathize, I want to be really clear about the desire to do that. I'm not opposed to it in in principle. I think the practical realities are unfortunately a little more complicated to sort through, and they're not so complicated for next year. Again, I don't, I don't know the number of siblings, but I imagine it's it's very low, just based on a number of, we haven't had that many non-Fort River kids, monolingual kids in the program. But the concern is just over time how that goes. So, you know, I think, you know, there's a number of different ways we could think about this. You know, we could try it for a year and or cap the number of siblings we accept in the program and have their own separate lottery. We've, as, it was in the packet, but you know, we have our four groups, we could make a fifth group, if we wanted to make a a fifth group or something along those minds, but I just want to make sure we're tracking this over time to make sure, if the committee wants to change the policy that way, to make sure that we're not making it a closed program.
That's, that's personally my my concern is, because then it becomes an equity issue, because it's no longer sort of, it's sort of it's, the idea of a closed and exclusive access to to a program, sort of in a public school makes it challenging for me, and I I grew up with a with a sister who was in special ed and went to a different school than I did, so I I know what it feels like, and I know how challenging that is, both for the family as well as for the students, so I I really empathize with with that situation. I think I'd be open to five and having a separate sibling sibling lottery, or is there a way that we could put a cap on it, like a fuse, that says, once we get to this, this, you know, this number, then then we we move to a lottery, right? So a separate lottery or or some, but that starts to make it super, super complicated, and I don't know how we do that. So I saw Mr. Demling's hand and Ms. Spitzer's hand, so we'll go Dem, Demling and then Spitzer.
Yeah, so I appreciate this conversation. There are like three or four points that both Dr. Morris and Ms. McDonald have brought up that I have not considered. Given that it's 9:20, my preference is not to vote on this tonight. I would like to bring it back and digest these, these, these points. Maybe with the ability to email Ms. Richardson if she's available to it to kind of talk through it. I I find myself coming at this from an interesting point of view, so I was a Crocker Farm parent, and I was a Wildwood parent, so so I was zoned, I am still currently zoned Crocker Farm, but I don't have any more kids going there. And my oldest son went to Wildwood because he was part of the ILC program for intensive special needs. And, you know, I really appreciate the services he got there, but that was hard, you know? And, you know, this this obviously came up when we were looking at the building project a number of years ago. So so I understand the strain that it puts on families. And I'm, as and as someone who went through that, I'm not particularly compelled by the line of thinking that because we don't offer sibling programs in these other programs, that we then therefore shouldn't offer it in in Comenantes. I feel like Comenantes should be evaluated for what Comenantes is and what we're trying to do, and there are some subtle differences here, right? You know, Comenantes is an is an opt-in program, fully, right? Now, technically, so is ILC, but not really, like, that's where my kid really ought to have gone if he wanted to get the services he needed. You know, so it wasn't, wasn't really much of a choice. I do find some of the arguments that we got from the community member who sent us this issue compelling about when, about the benefit to the program and to the students in the program when there are siblings in the program. I won't go through all the the information they cited, but they did make a decent case for you know, how it increases parent engagement and having two students in the same house that are are going through that immersion setting. I completely agree with Dr. Morris's first point that we don't want to dilute the Spanish-speaking population, so if we had a prioritization adjustment here, from my point of view, it would have to be within the of the language groups. You know, not not crossing that that boundary. You know, I've spoken about this before, about some other changes that I think we should do. But, but yeah, I don't think it's simple, and I would like to digest some of this. But, but yeah, I don't think it's simple, and I would like to digest some of this new stuff that I heard tonight, in order to make a more informed decision.
Ms. Spitzer?
I agree with Mr. Demling, it's been a long night, and it would be nice not to have to make this decision tonight, but I, I guess I'm just not inclined to change the policy, given that we said that, we were very clearly communicating the policy prior to anybody opting to enroll in the program, you know, we, we had a very clear policy, and I'm a little concerned, just, I think there are so few seats available to those who are not within the Fort River District, that to put, essentially take more of those seats off the table feels, I just, it feels like it's going to make things a lot more complicated and potentially, the, the other third thing that we haven't talked about, and it feels a little bit like getting really far ahead of ourselves, but I'm just going to put it out there, because I've been thinking about it, is the, is the building project, and so if we end up, either one of these options is going to have huge impacts on the Comenantes program, but if we create this sibling policy, and I know that, you know, like you said this earlier, 2025 is the year we're looking at, but I could see people who are currently in the program having siblings who start in 2025, so are we potentially putting, locking ourselves into something that's going to have an impact down the road when we're looking at a new building? So, again, I also feel like I'm not quite there yet with making a final decision, but I think it's worth just keeping that in mind as we, as we move forward.
I, I like the suggestion to sort of marinate a little bit longer and, and maybe, and then we come back at our, at our next meeting to, to vote. I was just looking, just to make sure that we're not, that the lottery wouldn't be starting before then, and looks like it wouldn't even start until March or April, so, yeah, so we have, we have time. Yeah, I, I think that with a, with a new building, the entire policy probably would need to be relooked at because of a consolidated school, or even a smaller school, so we don't, we don't even know where, you know, we, we just don't know the impacts of that new school building, so we, it's very likely that it will need to be relooked at. Okay. Ms. Lord or Mr. Harrington, did you want to add anything to the, the conversation? Yeah? So?
I move to adjourn the Amherst School Committee.
I was going to say, item 17, I second, moved by Spitzer, seconded by McDonald, and no discussion, so Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The Amherst School Committee is adjourned. Thank you.